Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is now 4:14. I say, "Había doy ante." Thank you for coming this evening, for welcoming us and providing us a bite to eat. I was all enjoying myself and Mary looked at the time. But thank you, Héjá, for your hospitality to the school and to the employees. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, board members, and the community and staff. Going on with the agenda. You're going to choose. With approval of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, John.
There's someone in the room. Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Lynn Hideman.
Here.
Sandra Jazn.
Here.
Joe Menini.
Now we can move to two. Thank you very much. Approval of agenda. Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. I would like to say there is, we need to... A... F. We need to remove from the consent agenda.
What?
The... Hold on.
Madam President, Board of Education, we're asking you to move that item because there was a miscommunication regarding that item and that donation from the Duana's group. They'd like to convey that straight to the teacher and not through the school.
Thank you, my lady. Is there motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Test this out here. Aye. There are no other changes to be noted. I approve of the agenda with that one item being removed.
Thank you. Mr. Hideman, roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Jeff.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Magnolito.
Yes.
Can we move that to page? It's behind the lights, though. Could be out.
Can we have a public comment? Renee Hardy.
Good evening, and thank you, Board of Directors, and... Capoe Middle School, thank you for hosting the meeting. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. And again, I'm a parent at Navajo Elementary. I'm an aunt at Navajo Middle School. And I'm a parent at the high school in Navajo. I'm going to first talk about the elementary. When we had our parent-teacher conference a couple months back, I had a couple of staff members come up to me and they told me that they were afraid of speaking out. I had a concern about the... Let's see, the immersion, is it immersion with the Navajo Language Program? I had questions. And when I went to two different staff members, they were afraid to talk to me. And one of them just kept telling me, "Go to the principal. I don't want to get in trouble and ask her. I don't know what to and how to answer your questions." Then they worked out some issues that they had. And I bumped back again to talk to a couple of staff members. And staff there at the elementary, it seems like they're walking on eggshells. One staff tells me she has health issues and she's used up all of her leave. And when she's trying to get a hold of the principal or her boss, it's hard. And at times, I don't get through to her. And when I come in the next day, I'm told to take leave without pay. And then, on the other hand, you have another staff member that accumulates comp time. And I wanted to know if that's in the policy, that staff can accumulate comp time to take if they're out of leave? Because I don't think it's fair that one staff is given an option to accumulate comp time and the other isn't. And we need our teachers out there. I don't want to hear about long-term stuffs. I'd like to keep all our teachers happy. And they can work it all out amongst themselves, that's fine. And then I'd like to bring up the high school. Friday, we had a meeting with the principal. And prior to our meeting on Friday, we hosted our Heartbreak Classic. And for three Sundays, we had parents come, volunteer their time, their day, and make improvements on their course, along with the coach, the two coaches there. Not once did we ever hear from the principal. Not once did we ever hear from custodians if we needed stuff done. But when we asked to get, like, the bushes, if they could help us with trimming some weeds right there in Parkville while we were home, that's not my job. And now, when you go there, the bushes are all gone. But you have this, I don't know if it's like a cloud or something, that everybody's like, "Okay, she's the one that told." And I'm not afraid to say, "I'm the one that spoke up." I have a student there, I'd like to see improvement. And so, come Friday, we sat down with the principal. And I was actually surprised, I was actually shocked. We had some concern with what was being said at the school. There was three parents and the head coach. And it was about fundraising. And that's another thing I need to clarify, if anybody will sit down with us, parents out there. But we sat down and we told her that we didn't do so well as far as our fundraising goes. And she still sat there and she said, "You know, I don't know. I had another staff come in and tell me different." And I said, "Okay, the staff member wasn't there, we were there. This is what we made." And then I told her, I said, "Ms. Sherman, it's real hard for me right now." I said, "It's easy to support our coach because he's been here with us, trying to get stuff improved for our student athletes. But where were you when it came down to volunteering, just showing some kind of support for the parents and for the community members that gave their time?" And then I said, "It's real hard for me to support you right now." With no hesitation, not a... Ms. Sherman looks at me and she says, "I don't need your support." And I chuckled and I said, "Oh, okay." And she goes, "I'm just here to do my job." But what I wanted to hear her say is, "I'm here for the students." A paycheck's another thing. It's like, we need to get our priorities straight for some staff members out there. And I've been testing the waters in Navajo. And what I mean by that is, I say things intentionally in the front office to see how far these things will go and who will go out there and change the story, kind of thing. And now, we got it down. You'll see, you'll read it on Facebook. You'll hear about it through the great line. And a couple weeks, or last week and the week before, we went in to speak to the principal. We didn't know she was on her vacation. We were just told that she was at a principal's meeting or training. So we just need to be more positive out there. And we need to share where exactly our leader is. And I would like to sit down and speak to some individuals about the clarification of fundraising, because we really don't know where we stand as parents. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The next public comment is from Frida Jo.
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to Crown Point. I look around and I see very many of our community members here. And I really wasn't going to say anything, but I hate it for you all to make this trip and not hear from anyone in our community. But first of all, the principal here at Crown Point here, I want to thank him for doing something about that blank wall of space out there. It really looks nice. And my granddaughter's commented on the names that were printed on the wall. I don't know if some of you got a close-up view of that, but I haven't. But she said it had the names of the students and the year they were going to graduate. So I thought that was pretty nice. The second thing I want to mention is, I understand that Crown Point High School has a marquee sign. And did I hear this myself? My name is Frida Jo and I'm from this community in Crown Point. I have a granddaughter that goes to school at Crown Point High School. She's a sophomore. And our oldest granddaughter graduated last year, and she's attending the University of Utah. In fact, she's on her way back up to South Lake right now. She's driving herself, and I'm a little bit on edge about that. But I mentioned the marquee sign. I didn't know we had a marquee sign until one of the teachers mentioned that we've had it for at least eight years. But we don't have a stand to put it on. And one of the biggest things, I think, that hurts our community, hurts our schools, is communication, communication with parents and the community. Having that marquee sign would help a lot. Right now, I see individuals putting boxes up there, paper signs that get rained on and blown away. But I don't know how much it would cost to put that sign up, but it would really be great if somebody could, you know, look into it for us and make that marquee sign functionable. It's sad if we purchased, put a lot of money into something and it's not being utilized. The other thing also has to do with communication. You know, this is a small community. We have a few chapters that have children that come here. We have knowledge-based chapters, we have Standing Rock, Wrightville, Smith Lake, I think, some from Smith Lake, Vicente, Crown Point here. And, you know, like I said, it's a small community. And I just heard through the great line that our principal is on leave for a month. And I wish that parents would have been informed. You know, it's... I think it's critical information for parents to know if the principal is not at the school. I know that there was an email sent to the staff, but nothing from the principal or from anyone concerning the principal. And I think, you know, that's another area where we don't... We fail in communication. But other than that, that's only the issues I have right now. Again, welcome to Crown Point, and I hope you all have a safe trip back. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Move on to three. We have approval of minutes A, September 29, 2016, special meeting. Yes.
Okay. On the September 29 minutes, that's what we're on, right?
Yes.
I am confused halfway down the page where it says, "Call order," and so on. It says, "Calling another meeting in the same meeting," which is to order at 6:00 p.m., but then it says, "April 13." There's a crowded timetable. Just need to... Hear something. I'll move approval of the minutes of September 29 with the correction on the date as identified.
Mr. Menini.
Yes.
Ms. Jeff.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Magnolito.
The next is October 3, regular meeting.
Madam President. On the second page of these minutes, or the top, it says, in effect, that I said, and then about the third phrase there, "The board does have a role. The higher fire or tell the superintendent what to do in New Mexico on personnel assignments." There should be a "not" in there. The board does not have a role to hire or fire or tell the superintendent what to do with the Mexico on personnel assignments. And I was complaining, I think, to those who would make public comments at that point about the limitations on the board's authority under New Mexico law, that that resides, personnel matters reside with the superintendent. And there's only one exception, I think, to that. So there should be a "not" after "does."
That was a very important one for you to point out. Thank you, Mr. Hideman. Any other corrections or comments on the minutes? Motion, board members?
Madam President, motion.
Thank you. Mr. Menini? Roll call, please.
Ms. Jeff. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Magnolito.
Yes.
We'll move forward to five... Oh, I'm sorry. For the approval of the consent agenda items.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda items.
I have a question, Mrs. Hanks, on the transfer, the temporary permanent cash transfer request, a file for... Oh, is that actually... I'm sorry, Mrs. Hanks. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll wait there. I'll wait for my...
Mr. Menini.
Yes.
Ms. Jeff.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Magnolito.
Yes.
Number five, we have the study circle and reports. We have one, the superintendent's report. Terry, we'll go to recognition.
Thank you, Madam President, board members, guests. Welcome to Crown Point. A few weeks back, well, about a year ago, we started planning for the rollout of the Apple Connected recipients throughout our district. And we do have three schools that received Apple Connected grants, Tohachi Elementary, Thiru Middle School, and Segai High School. So with that, at Thiru Middle School, there was a contest. The contest was called, "What Having an iPad to Use in School Means to Me." It was an essay contest, and we'd like to award the winners of that essay contest from Thiru Middle School. So if I, when I call your name, if you could come up and shake the board members' hands. Emily Martin, 6th grade, is Emily here tonight? Devin Jameson, is Devin here tonight? Cora Jones, 7th grade? Congratulations to Cora. And the fourth recipient is Taylor Long, 8th grade. Congratulations, Taylor. Madam President, board members, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I think they brought their essays to read. And if they're more than welcome to come over and read their essays, no problem.
Good afternoon. My name is Cora Jones, 7th grader at Thiru Middle School. And this is my essay about my technology. Okay. Technology has been growing over the past years. Last year, Thiru Middle School got accepted and was awarded the Apple Mac Edgerr. When I heard about this, I was just so excited that I could not wait. Finally, this year, 2016, 2017, we are gathering in this domain as we prepare to receive our iPads and ready to use them in our classes. Every student is surely going to be responsible for his or her iPad. Our school is very lucky to have gotten an opportunity like this. This type of technology to replace our books is going to be a quick reference for me. It has such applications like Safari and Chrome that can help me find and collect data and ideas. Drawing diagrams can be very easy, quick, and will surely be simple now. I can also do more actual studying any time I want to. Managing my classes and assignments won't be as difficult because now all I basically need is my iPad. It takes up less time to find documents or notes I will need in class, and I won't be spending as much money on supplies. Using the iPad will also make learning more fun. Hopefully, our teachers will give us permission so we can listen to music, watch movies, and play games sometimes, and do fun activities, too. This event we are celebrating right now, and our opportunity reminds me of how lucky, very lucky I am to be able and intend through middle school. I know that our principal, Mrs. Short, has worked very hard to give this grant for our school. And so, I would like to say thank you. Thank you, Miss Short, for our opportunity to learn through our iPads. This event teaches me, too, that the world is changing fast. We are starting to slowly get better at reading and switching by becoming free killers. We are incorporating more technology in the classrooms, but most of all, this teaches me to become a more responsible student. We should not only be thankful of the resources I am given to use in my studies, but also to show that I am capable of using them responsibly and appropriately at all times. Thank you so much, Coach.
So next, we have Taylor.
That's it. My name is Taylor Long, and I'm 8th grade at Thiru Middle School. My class is Keanu, Miss Short, Jean, Ashish, Tijon, Lap, Tashit, Jean, Nidashonella. And today, I'm going to read my essay about what happened to iPad in school in school. I strongly believe that iPads are a great learning tool for both teachers and students. It's a great way to introduce children our age to digital media and to enhance our learning of others. It will improve greatly our communication between teachers and students. Grades, attendance, and education will improve tremendously as well. From a student point of view, we can get our class assignments done on time, be more organized, download apps that will help with our schoolwork, find our notes easier, and go back to our class discussion at the meeting, which means no more carrying books. It will also help the teachers with writing papers, scheduling their duty plans, downloading videos for our projects, and sending homework and apps. Not only are iPads helping... Not only are iPads helping us, but also kids with special needs. They can communicate with us through this device. With the new, with the help of new technology, it will improve, it will help us in the future and a great start to college. Having an iPad is such an honor and privilege. Some families don't have the money to purchase an iPad, and individuals such as my son, whose academic events come first. I'm a hard-working student who also worry about the one thing I like about the teachers, our feedbacks I get back from them. Therefore, having an iPad, I won't have to wait longer to see their inputs and the grades I received. I have a passion for reading, so it would be a lot quicker just to find a book I want to read. For instance, Google Maps can be useful in history class. We can use our imagination traveling to different places where history was made. Throughout the year, my study time will be valuable with an iPad, and hopefully, other students will be, too.
Thank you. That concludes the recognitions for this evening.
Board members, I just want to say a little bit about this. I did attend this event at the mid-school when they did do the celebration. I am very thankful for the hard work that Mrs. Short and her staff have put into this. And I know it goes even further than that, because I sat there and talked with our IT people. And, you know, the work that they have to do to facilitate something like this is big. And I just want to be very thankful for that. And the comments the kids made, you know, that's coming from them. And they see the changes that's happening within our world with technology. And I think more opportunities like this, we can provide our students the better. And you heard from themselves that, you know, they do need this resource. So whatever we can do to help that, I think, and helping the principals, teachers finding grants, as this Apple Grant was given to five, or three of our schools, I think is going to be a big plus. And I like the restriction, or I want to... The rules they put on using the iPads. You know, they call it "Apple Up," I think, is what they said. You know, when the teacher is talking and that the iPad need to be put away, they... "Apple Up" is the phrase they use. And they flip it over and the app part is up, so they can't be looking at the screen. So I like the way they incorporated and implemented this program. So thank you.
We grab one that works. I just want to say what was going through my head here in these excellent, excellent writings. And that was a... And that was, and probably the teachers are ahead of this thought already, but I was thinking, hey, that good reading material right there with the class, kids could be, I hope those essays have gotten shared with other students to read because they're good thoughts, a lot of vocabulary in there that was used. And so we got to hear it, and I hope other students, and I'm just thinking, we've got all kinds of books out there. We've got reading material right here from our own students. So thank you.
They read, all the winners, the four winners wrote their essays to their student body during the assembly. So yes, the whole student body got to hear. Thank you again, Justin Kehat. Thank you so much for coming and reading us your essay. And to the parents also, the grandparents, uncles, thank you very much for coming and bringing your student here this evening. We'll go ahead and move forward to under to the Hispanic Heritage Month report. Mr. Hideman, I think that was something you wanted to talk about.
No, I didn't want to talk about it. I wanted a report from the district on what schools did. I don't know, Paul, has anything been passed on to you, share on that?
Mr. Hideman, members of the board, when Teri checked into, it was first of all on our website, but we didn't force or mandate the principals to do anything. It was up to them. But when we asked if they've done anything in preparation for this report, none of them responded because I know they're busy with teacher observations and doing other things. So if they did do something, it was at the school site.
In other words, we don't have the information they requested. I let the superintendent know over a month ago that I was going to have this on the agenda. I submitted it with the agenda once and then acknowledged that since Hispanic Heritage Month doesn't follow a calendar month, you know, instead of just September, it's actually the middle of September, the middle of October, or whatever it is. And, you know, in our own school board mission, vision statements, and we keep coming around this thing about multicultural community education, and we place a lot of emphasis on Navajo because of the majority of our students and parents. And yet, we have a long Hispanic history in Gallup, particularly in the town area. And I wanted to know what our, I mean, if all the schools chose not to do it, I want to know that. If they're doing something with it, I'd like to know what they did because I think it is important to deal with this cultural heritage and identity of all of our students. And one of the things that's a big one on the calendar is not every group gets a month on the calendar, you know, at this point. But certainly, that and Native American Month is coming up. But I was hoping we'd hear of some good things that some schools did, both to celebrate the Hispanic heritage of our community, but more specifically, of course, the identity of any students from that background. I might ask for something more next agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hideman. You will get a report under next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I would kind of extend off of Mr. Hideman's comment since we do know that Native American Month is coming up. I think we can add that to see what the schools are doing also to continue that report. And that would give them a month ahead of time notice again, too. Three, board report. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Manini.
I have no report. I have no report, not certain. I wish to make sure you put under national trip, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to first of all introduce a candidate that's out there that's running for office. And if she could please stand, she's from this area, she's from Crown Point, and she's running for vice president for the Crown Point chapter, Ms. Helen Murphy. If you could please stand up. Secretary Treasurer. I'm sorry, I guess I want her to run for vice president. Thank you. I just wanted to let the board members know and the community people know that I attended the Churchill Chapter. We appropriated 1.8 million to, we supported their long, I guess, awaited senior center. And so the state funded the whole project and the infrastructure. And so I did also thank the elderly that were there because that was one thing that they really wanted to have us support, and they did get the full funding. And during that time, I also informed them that, you know, I was their newly-appointed school board member and kind of more or less brought up, you know, the issues that are reflecting our district and the concerns that a lot of the parents and teachers have. And so, and advised them to put it in writing because we, as school board members, can't dictate and tell the staff or administration what they should do or what they shouldn't do. So I more or less brought that issue up to them, and Madam President, I got a lot of support. And so I told them I will continue to support them and their initiatives in the future. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
I have three things I'd like to mention. One is just for information, went to Santa Fe last Wednesday for a meeting. Had to do with UNM Gallup remodeling a building called Lyons Hall for use by the Gallup, by the College Middle High School. And there was not full information put out ahead of the meeting. We thought it was going to have to do with, more with the program and the relationship between the university and the district, and they asked me to go. It turned out it was simply on the mechanics of the plan for the building and the square foot, the cost per square foot. But we did get to share some information on the Middle College High School with the group that was there, including the Secretary for Higher Education. Because as some of you realize, that program graduated 100% of its seniors last year with over two thirds of them getting an AA degree at the same time, a college degree at the same time they got their high school diploma. So it's very special in that regard, and we got to share that. The second thing is that I did attend a brief portion of this last weekend's Indian Education Committee orientation. Gave a little talk there at noon. I was privileged to do that, asked to do that. But it was a very thorough training, the parts that I saw. Carmen Moffett was presenting things on regulations and procedures and so on. And this was a two-day thing. And this is the agenda, it was planned, and I thought it was pretty solid. I don't say they covered, worked out all the questions that we have about IEC operations, but the people, and they have a number of new members now, and so they sat through the whole thing. Now, the third thing I want to mention is that when we give our board reports, we're usually thinking in terms of events, activities, meetings, and so on that will be attended. But I want to mention that one of the things I do, and I would do it out of personal interest anyway, but as I read the newspapers, including the Navajo Times and that other one in Gallup, and I read the paper looking and saying, what's going on in our communities, in our territory, in our people's lives? And are our students wondering, are our students getting prepared to deal with those kinds of issues that the papers report? There is one in the last Navajo Times having to do with some of the issues that affect ranching and the whole history of site leases and grazing permits and all that. And I've seen two articles on that lately in terms of, you know, you can't buy and sell site leases and grazing permits and so on. They get transferred, and then you get, you know, all these things that become really complex issues for tribal leaders and chapter leaders and the people themselves to deal with. And some of those things, again, I think could be in the upper-level curriculum to get kids oriented to these things that affect people. And then in the Gallup Independent, just today, the front-page article, one of them was about Crown Point, Crown Point Hospital, and the challenge of keeping doctors, and whether that's difficult partly because of the lack of housing, or things going to that. So these are very real things that affect people. And sometimes our education, you know, we think of education, when I grew up, they always told us, it's preparation for life. You know, you're learning all these things for when you get out of the world as an adult. But some of these things are happening now, and I think students can be exposed to those things, you know, even from high school, even middle school, in terms of things that affect their communities. And so I just mention that, and I say it, I want to bring that up because some years ago, once upon a time, when I was a principal on a reservation in the Navajo Territory, and I'd ask the teachers, at that time, we didn't have as many Navajo teachers, mostly non-Navajo teachers, and I'd say, do you read the Navajo Times? And hardly any of them ever read it. And that was the paper dealing with the people in the school they were working with. So I hope that our teachers are paying attention to what goes on in their families' lives, and the newspapers, of course, are a key way to do that.
Madam Chair, I forgot to mention, this month is also cancer awareness month, and I am wearing my purple shirt today because I had lost three of my aunts to breast cancer, cervical cancer, my grandmother, and also lost my uncle with cancer as well. So, you know, I'm very supportive of the cancer awareness month, so that was why I was running the topic, so thank you.
Madam President, I do not have a report at this time, but I would like to thank Crown Point Middle School for hosting us today. And thank you to those who are here and attendings, and especially to Ms. Hardy, who came all the way from Navajo. I do appreciate it, and I'm glad to see you here, and knowing that your concerns are very important, that you do travel this far, so I mean, thank you.
Again, Shana, thank you, board members, for your report. Shestal, I also attended the Johnson O'Malley Indian Education Orientation. I wish I could say the same thing that Lynn said, that it was, they didn't get the guest speakers they wanted. I think there were some missing components during the day I was there. I did give my report, or my presentation then, I did a PowerPoint for them and just kind of outlined how I got into being where I'm at now as a mom, and as a parent, and working my way up to the school board. So I kind of gave a history on that and, you know, giving some encouragement and reinforced a lot with what it means to be a parent, the challenges, and, you know, just a lot of encouragement for them to stay strong, to stay united. And, you know, one thing I said was, you know, as a parent, we really need to, I'm sorry, excuse me, as board members and as administration, we really got to think about our parents, and because they're the ones, one of my sisters on the NIDA was telling me that in a formula, the school formula, you know, we, as parents, the parents are the ones that are consistent, they're a constant within that formula. And, you know, we can have board members that can come and go, we can have administration that comes and goes, teachers that come and go, but the ones that stay are our parents. Because as soon as our kids graduate, the next one that's coming down the line is our grandkids, or, you know, kids that we care for. So that's what I told them. I said, we should be investing more into our parents, these trainings that are very valuable, and make that connection of what's going on within our district also. There's a, the ESA, the Every Student Succeed Act is out now. I don't know if you guys know about that within your community, but that's taking over No Child Left Behind. And we need to get those words out to the information of Common Core, parenting skills, you know, the grades, how to read those reports that come in. So that's what I really wanted to, I kind of talked about that also during my report. I was very fortunate to attend the NIDA, the National Indian Education Association Convention last week, as Mr. Manini mentioned. I think this is a time that I wish I was home, and I wish that I was, I had more support there, maybe another board member, so we could have split this phenomenal breakout sessions that were available, and I can only attend so much. There were some that I attended for 35, 40 minutes and then jumped into the next one because I couldn't really decide which one I wanted to attend. Just to give you a brief, some of the sessions I attended, I did attend again and said hello to my colleagues at the National Johnson O'Malley Association. I did attend a special education that was hosted by the Epics for Special Needs Children, the Dual-Credit Partnership, the Ups and Downs, Attracting and Retaining Excellent Native Educators in Light of National Teacher Shortages, the Culturally Based Horizontal Curriculum, Shared Accountability Building the Bridge That Connects Our School to Our Community, Healthy Native Youth, an Online Portal That Provides Access to Culturally Relevant Health Curriculum, the ESA, the ESA, I'm sorry, the one I just mentioned, the Every Student Succeed Act, the Bureau of Indian Education Listening Session, listening session on ESA again because I still need to gain as much as I can, learn as much as I can on that, culture in the classroom and blending learning, Every Student Succeed Act Implementation Resource Tribal State Consultation, Policy Manual, Building Pride and Power in Native Communities, Healthy Relationship Skills Strengthening Tribal Families. Everyone, and this is a comment that I put on the report that I had to submit back to the district. Everyone, every one of these sessions I attended will benefit our students and our families. This session reinforced my mission as a school board member for our district that they have inspired me to continue to focus on our youth and families. As a district, we need a long ways to go to provide the level of education that we need for our children, of what our children deserve. A culturally relevant curriculum is not impossible, or building bridges between our schools and our community and continuing to reach out and invest in our parents is very important. Our parents are constant in our district, and they have, they have families, roots in their communities, and they are here to stay. We need to invest in them and provide our parents with trainings to educate and help them grow and understand the changes of our educational system. Our employees, board members, and administrations come and go, and after, and our attention, our focus needs to be on our people, our children, our parents, and our grandparents. There was another question, I didn't write the question down, I forgot what the questions were, but I can give a report, or it's hard, you're going to bring this back to your district or something, but I can give a report at our board meeting. I also picked up extra information on some of the sessions that I can hand out to our other board members. Continuing our effort as a board of Indian, as a board, that Indian education is very important, essential in our district, that it is over 80% Native American. Continue to encourage our district to focus on our students and our parents, guardians, and grandparents. Continue to have accountability, transparency, and collaboration. I think that I, I think in almost all the sessions I attended, there were concerns about buy-in. If there is no buy-in, it will continue to fail. Concerns of educational personnel not taking our culture and language seriously and not supporting revitalization. and not supporting revitalization was a concern of many districts. Many concerns we have addressed in our district. Many other states are also stressing the, like, housing for teachers in rural areas of their reservations. Not enough, not enough growing your own programs, higher payings for our staff, over-testing policies that are not up to date, especially in the changing of time, especially in technology areas. I'm interested in hearing and seeing how the ESSA will help our unique needs and help our, help us personalize it more for our district. So that is the report I wrote on the training I took. And I'm very thankful that I did get that. I don't know if other board members have continued that same process when they attend a board meeting. But I know that it did help me to put my thoughts down on how I was going to bring this back, how we were going to implement this into the program. So I don't know if you guys know, my, Jovanna Paletta, when did we implement this form? The employee report? I guess every time they go on a training, they give a report. Okay, so are those reports on file? We can, okay, because I think that would be something interesting of how, I think the most important question I saw there was how would they bring that back to the district? Or how would they incorporate that to the district? And I think that's some of the stuff I would be interested in knowing because there is a lot of training. Any questions for me, board members? There are, I did give you a packet. I could, I wish I could grab everything that I could, but I luggage when I went over the limit and I didn't want to pay the extra fee.
You remind me, and I'm glad you got to go, Ms. Manuelito, Priscilla, because it is a great event and so many dozens and dozens of sessions. You can't, you can't scratch the surface, in a sense, you can't get to half of it. So I'm glad you got to experience that. And the question of people bringing things back, whether it's ourselves, whether it's teachers and staff when they go to conferences, I think is, comes up perpetually with schools where, I guess I've seen it multiple times, where you get a policy that people are supposed to bring back a report to share, and that lasts for a while and then it just kind of goes away. It's hard to keep people doing that and keeping on top of it. But the idea is certainly valid. But you remind me, when you mentioned ESSA, that replaced the No Child Left Behind Act, I want to just mention this idea, board members. Neither Priscilla mentioned it, or I, but we both, and I don't know if any of the others of you got to attend sessions last week when Secretary of Education Scandera was at Gallup. Was it Tuesday evening and all day Friday, I mean, all day Wednesday? And she came with, what, eight staff members from the PEP, from the Public Education Department? That itself is impressive. The history of the Department of Education in New Mexico has not included, has not been oriented to being out in the schools and in the communities, rural or town areas. I think from what I've seen, because I've had contact with it over the years, even when, even though I was out of New Mexico for quite a while in the area, they isolate themselves in Santa Fe. That's been the historic pattern. And this time, they came out, they were going around to a lot of hospital districts, and the secretary herself, and I think there were eight staff members there. And that's really great, but we'll see if it yields fruit. Because they can tell them, listen, and go through the motions, and yet I think they're pretty locked into certain ways of thinking. And also, for example, an issue, and I raised some questions about reviewing curriculum, state requirements on curriculum. And the answer was, "Well, we're looking at that and for some possible changes in four years." Well, you know, because they don't want to change something, they want the freshmen now to know what they're facing in terms of graduation requirements. But if they add options, that doesn't hurt anybody, that increases things, right? So I'm not totally optimistic, but I really, just to let people know, that the Secretary of Administration, her staff, came out, spent a day plus in Gallup and were going on to, you know, other districts. So that's good, but, and that came, well, what I want to say with that against, because the new ESSA federal law brought some of the control, took some of the control, you know, domination away from the feds and brought it back to the state level. Now we'll see if the state would be open to bringing that, some of that, down to the local level so that we have some options that fit local needs and local goals. I'm not sure they're too open to that. I think the Superintendent's Association has pushed for that a little bit so that there can be more variation allowed at local level. We'll see what the PEP does with it, so.
Madam President, I just want to thank you for that report and what you provided for us just looking through this. You know, I can see that, you know, there's some very interesting reading here that I would like to go through. I don't know how many other people went or that were there from our school district. I don't know if they brought back any information or anything that they felt of any importance that would be helpful to the board. But, you know, I don't know if we can get asked or get a report from them as well. Oh, she's the only one that went?
Terry was there, just too quickly, just by way of conversation. Next year, come on, Terry. Next year, unfortunately, in one way, NIA moves around every year, next year it's in Florida. You know, if we could plan to have a bunch of people, I can't think of a better event for people to learn things than just get oriented to the whole realm of Indian education. But some years it's been close, it's been in Albuquerque, it's been in Phoenix, but next year I think it's in Florida, so I don't know how many of you could afford to send, but hopefully some people can go.
Madam President, school board, is it okay to address now? Okay, so as, I attended the NIA conference in Reno primarily as the chair of the Indian Ed Advisory Council, working alongside Latifah Phillips and Diallo Calabaza. We presented twice on our urban Indian work that's been done at the state as far as the advisory council and the teacher pipeline, which we're working on to try to recruit more native teachers to all districts, basically here in New Mexico, but of course, we're always interested in ours. We also attended the TNA breakout meeting, which was held on the Wednesday of the conference. Registration usually isn't until Thursday, but on Wednesday, they hold all the, I would say, regional and national caucuses there. TNA is the Tribal Education Directors National Assembly under the direction of Quinton Romanos. We learned of their initiatives. Basically, on the next level, up above the school district level, we're looking at national policies in which the NIA can advocate to Congress in Washington. They do have their priorities set. And the NIA conference is basically a way to not only capture more ideas, but move forward on the main strands that they're moving forward on right now. There were many presentations, I was actually part of five at the conference, having to do with the Indian Pueblo Cultural 100 Year Curriculum that's being released at the end of the month. I was a writer on that. And then we helped with the SC3 presentations, which are the South Central Comprehensive Center out of Oklahoma University. We worked with Dr. Jacob Sotai and Quinton on several presentations there. So like Ms. Manuelito said, it was a huge conference. We were either on different floors or in different sections throughout the weekend. It's a very nice experience, favorable one. And I did bring back information to share with district leadership as well as Paletta on some of the initiatives that are driving us forward as the Indian Ed Advisory Council in Santa Fe. Thank you. We just went, where are you going? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry, and Madam President, I guess I just have two items that I wanted to discuss. One of them is, were any of our legislators present there? Would have been nice if our legislators that are in our districts, especially the Native American legislators, were present. And that would have been very good. The second one is, or going back to Mr. Hennerman, saying that, you know, maybe next year, at the next NIAIC conference, I also like to see if we can also invite some of our teachers within our districts and help cover their pay expense so that they can also attend this conference. Because it's very educational and I see that there's a lot of stuff that are in here and it covers them as well, too. So that's one thing I would like to try to encourage. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. We have some notices and communication. October 19, we have a Region 1 meeting in Aztec, which is on Wednesday. October 19, we have, that's also no school for, due to Data Day. October 20th and the 21st, no school due to fall break. November 7 is our next Board of Education meeting in Gallup. November 11 is Veterans Day, no school. November 21 is another Board of Directors meeting. Board of Education, I'm sorry, Board of Education meeting. November 21 through the 25th is Thanksgiving break for students. Moving on to New Mexico School Board. On November 8 is Election Day. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for that reminder. We'll move on to five is the New Mexico School Board Association Training on Roles and Responsibilities. And we have Andy Sanchez here that will be doing that discussion with us.
Thank you, Madam President. This will be a presentation on essentially the Bill of Rights with regards to the authority the board has and how it should be exercised. So this will be part of the NSBA training program and it is certified by the NSBA. Obviously, there's an oath of office that board members take with all regards that are consistent with Section 1 of the state's constitution. And of course, it's down there at the bottom of what the oath was for every member of the board with regards to performing their offices to which they are elected or appointed. The local school boards have the following powers and authorities, subject to the rules of the department, develop education policies. So therefore, the governing body, maybe school district, is supposed to be setting up all of the educational policies that includes not only student discipline, employee discipline, but all of the things that have to go into a school district. They, of course, employ a local superintendent for the school district and they fix the superintendent's salary. They also review and prove the annual budget, you guys do that every year, as well as follow through with the annual budget. You acquire, lease, and dispose of property. That includes real property as well as tangible properties, such as old computers, desks, cars, vehicles, all that stuff. You are ultimately the governing body with regards to disposal or acquisition of those properties. And you have the capability of sue or be sued. So you are primary source or party for any action. Also, the school district has the power of eminent domain. In other words, if it came down to it, you could, you could essentially condemn abuse of property and do that through the process of the district court. You have the power of taking that to, for school districts. In other words, to build a school, you could condemn property and use it to build a school. Can also issue general obligation bonds, provide for repair, maintenance of the property. So in other words, all of the maintenance facilities, all the maintenance personnel, everything is provided under your policy and you provide for that in the budget. You have the ability to subpoena witnesses for school hearings that could be student disciplinary hearings as well as employment hearings with regards to your power under the School Personnel Act and also under the public school code with regards to student discipline. Okay, contract for expenditure or funds except for salaries. So you could, which is, this is broad, is a very broad term. This is your RFP, this is where you, all contracts should come or should be notified or have delegated to the administration. In other words, if you want, you can, every contract for services or every contract for property can come through the board. Probably you have a delegated authority for a certain threshold amount that usually goes to the administration. But that is your authority and power to do.
Are the contracts for the RFPs, are we allowed to put them on our website and board? And whoever got the contract, would we put them on their own?
If you want to, the contracts for services or contracts for RFPs, none of those are confidential. The only thing that's confidential is when you consider the selective for the RFP can be done in executive session under the Open Meetings Act. But the contracts themselves, the applications, all the RFPs are generally public documents and can be produced or can be made available for anybody who wants to see the RFPs. Most competitors or most companies, if, suppose an RFP for a construction contract, is not uncommon for them to send you an IPRA to see all of your past RFPs for construction. And so therefore, they get an idea of what you're looking for, what you're doing. But these are all public records that can be done with that. Of course, a contract for expenditure means all contracts, not employee contracts come to you for approval or for delegation of authorities for that. So there's a contract to be signed that usually comes before the board. You can adopt rules for the administration of all powers and duties of the board. In other words, the board regulates itself. So you provide whatever policies and regulations you want or have to regulate how you conduct meetings, how you conduct or have a relationship with yourselves, or how you interact with the administration. You accept or reject all gifts to the school district. So this is not, I know we had discussions at one of your other board meetings about time line implications for this, but it is a standard statutory authority you have is if anybody wants to give a gift to the school district or also if they want to give a gift to your employee who's getting the gift but for their standing as an employee, the board has the authority to approve or deny the gift or reject the gift. Pay rewards for information. If you would like to set up a reward for, you know, 25 or 2,500 bucks for anybody who leads to the arrest of somebody who has caused vandalism in one of the schools, you can offer a reward, and it wouldn't be an anti-donation issue. Okay? So those are the authorities of the Board. They're very broad. If you go back and forth through those, how to look at the authorities you have, these are very broad authorities that cover a lot of things. For basically, the Board has the power of talking. In other words, if it costs money to utilize, at some point, the Board has authority to be involved in that process, or by statutory authority outright, has the Board authority to approve or reject it. Okay? It includes all contracts. So if it costs money, it comes to the Board. Now, PED has a bunch of regulations that they put together from the PED through their authority under the Public School Code that talk about, also delineates the power of local school boards, which is, which has to be consistent with broad authorities that already exist in its statute. So you employ, you evaluate the local superintendent. You delegate administrative supervisor functions to the local superintendent. So you delineate what administrative functions you want superintendent to do or other administrators to do. And you must refrain from involvement and delegating administrative functions once you've delegated it. Ensure the district funds are appropriately managed and dispersed. This is obviously a very important regulation with regards to your Board of Finance that you have through the School Finance Act, which says that you have to safeguard all public funds. You have to ensure that it's all done legally in pursuant to statute. So you have that administrative to make sure the district funds are managed appropriately through your business office. Yes, Kevin?
On the first one, the employee evaluating local superintendent. Are we regulated by how many times we evaluate our superintendent in one year?
No. You can reevaluate, you can evaluate as many times as you want. The superintendent's employment is, the relationship is between you and the, between him and the Board, or her and the Board. So you guys can exercise whatever any other employer has to do with this. Now, if you have policies and procedures in which, remember, you're also regulating ourselves. So if you have policies and procedures that say how you do things, then you can do that. If you don't like what those policies say, then change them. They're your policies to make them consistent with what you want to do.
Second one, the job description, position description for the superintendent or that larger country designer.
Yes, the, yes, the, 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 be able to enter into a contract to employ means that you can delineate what those powers and authorities. Long as they're not inconsistent with the superintendent's statutory authorities, which we will cover, you have the ability to do that. Okay? You have the statutory authority to employ a local superintendent. Okay? You can delineate what his job, jobs, duties, responsibilities, and how they're going to be performed, and how you evaluate the supervisor or her, long as it's not inconsistent with their own statutory authorities with regards to, like, personnel matters. You can't create an evaluation system where you interfere with personnel matters. But you can, in fact, evaluate on the manner in which the superintendent does the personnel matters. Okay? So you refrain, you ensure the district funds, budgets are managed, you oversight revenue and expenditures within the budget. And you guys do that because Ms. Hanks brings you bars and everything else that goes along as consistent with the requirement for oversight of your budget and ensure the revenues are in within the budgetary requirements that you have. Because you have to understand, the School Finance Act allows you to have local rule or local control with regards to budget to the extent that you provide a balanced budget and you stay within a balanced budget. So if you supply a balanced budget to the PED, then the PED really lacks any control over the budgetary process for you because you gave them a balanced budget, and that's all that's required. Thank you.
So with that, with that approval of the expenditure or that, well, the, the, the bachelor, before the Board, before they're given out?
There should be some.
Depending on our budget, but I know a lot of the top now, you know, where we can have, you know, these things were breaking out, and we turn around and go, well, this does not fit therefore, because we're being, the money should go here.
If it's still within, if it's still, you can control all funding if you control the budget, and where money goes, provided there's already not another legal commitment to that money. Okay? In other words, if money's already been committed through an employment contract, then you're not going to be able to pull it back regardless of whether there was Board approval or not. In other words, that's an issue of supervisor and evaluation. It's not an issue of anything illegal. In other words, if there's money's contract, in other words, if it was RFP, or there was some other contract that was put into place that obligates those funds, even if it was done without the Board's approval, those funds have probably been committed. And you have to, you have to honor the contract. Okay? You probably could go through a process of saying, well, it's void and all that other stuff, but it's a long, drawn-out process, but it can be done. In other words, if there was no Board approval for a contract being entered into, you could argue that it was void because the Board never approved it. If the Board never approved it, then it was a void action, and therefore, the contract is void, too. But you end up in a legal battle for whether that exists, but it can be done. Okay? Under 22414, the superintendent is designated under statute as the chief executive officer of the school district, in which is that the Board governs and sets out policies and procedures. The superintendent is now in charge of administering those policies and procedures and fulfilling those goals. You carry out the education policies, it goes to the PED and, of course, the local Board. They administer and supervise the school district as the chief executive officer. They employ, fix salaries, sign, terminate, discharge, all appointments. So they employ, so those are the contracts that you guys don't have, can't approve under the other statutory authority are the employment contracts. Because he has the power, superintendent has the power to employ. So all the contracts are his with regards to the authority. He does prepare a budget for your approval. He has a statutory requirement to prepare the budget. You have a statutory obligation to review the budget and approve it. So it's a two-part process with regards to the budget. Okay. He can administer those. The PED rules and regulations are also there with regards to federal regulations in terms of following and being, being compliant with the local school board policies, state federal rules. He is required under PED regulations to attend all Board meetings or when necessary. He is designated as a licensed administrator to attend the meeting in his or her place. Okay? Ensure that the school patrons are informed and involved in the acquisition, planning, development of school facilities, providing adequate facilities, and they perform state and federal mandates. So this is basically the buy-in, the stuff, the stuff that has to go with regards to your facilities and with regards to public input and stakeholders' input into what's going on. And the superintendent specific that are PED regulations accountable for all student safety issues. Okay? So the legislative, basically, the Board acts as a legislative function. Be from here.
So there's some child that was injured, but then he said that they would, the superintendent is accountable to that, but then the Board would get?
Yes, it works that way. Because he's your employee, so you get sued at the, basically, under a theory called responde ante superior. Okay? So you're accountable for student safety. Doesn't mean the superintendent can't be named as a party as well, but eventually comes to the Board. Okay? You work as a legislative function. You adopt policies, procedures. You also are quasi-judicial with regards to student employee hearings. The superintendent administers and directs the work of the employees. He administers the day-to-day functions of the school district. You must follow all of your approved and adopted policies with regards to that, and that's what you hold up to with regards, him or her, to with regards to conduct. And of course, with when you're evaluating the superintendent, you have to look at two ways, two, two ways to look at it are this way. If he or she is authorized to do it, but you don't like the manner in which they're doing it, it's evaluated. That's something you do with the evaluation process with regards to whether there needs to be a growth plan, needs to be some changing in how things are done, provide resources, and then you reevaluate it. If he or she is not authorized to do something, then that's a question of misconduct, and then you guys take appropriate disciplinary action to basically, which is basically the knock-it-off. Knock it off, you'll be fired, or you violated our rules, you're going to get fired. So those are the, those are the two types of the supervision.
Second bullet?
Quasi-judicial. And discharge hearings, like an employee discharge hearings, you basically act like the court or a judge. You guys will make a decision of whether there is just cause to fire an employee. An employee who has a contract, for example, a teacher who has a certified contract to be employed, if there was a reason why the superintendent wanted to fire that person, they would ask for a hearing, or they have the right to ask for a hearing, and they would appear before you. Superintendent would essentially put on a hearing, a small trial-like proceeding, to convince you that he or she had just cause to fire that teacher. And you guys would decide whether there was just cause to fire that. And you have that ability. You also have the ability to issue subpoenas pursuant to that hearing process so that witnesses would appear.
So when that goes around, I mean, if we have to do a case or fire or retire, would come to the Board and that matter, then would we have to?
Yes. That's the only exception we have to the personnel matters, is if you are, if you are, you are hearing something as part of a due process appellate process for them to be fired. You have the ability to overrule the superintendent with regards to whether or not you think there's just cause to fire that individual.
Is it correct that the issue of the right of the superintendent?
Yes, the, the, the hearing right has to be invoked by the employee. This happens, this happens all the time, actually. If, if you think, if you think about the numbers, and maybe that's a reflection of, 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 on any given moment, right now, the numbers, if you just play the numbers, one out of five or one out of every six employees is substandard in some way, whether they're on a growth plan or they are not performing adequately, at any given moment, this is not even including the employees that commit acts of misconduct. On any given moment, 20%. Because even before New Mexico Teach was instituted, it was pretty much a 20% rating. 20% of the teachers' workforce was either on a growth plan or was being graded unsatisfied. After New Mexico Teach was invented, it stayed about 20%. So you're talking about 1 in 5, 1 in 6. Just teachers alone are going to be substandard and are working towards that. So if you look at those numbers, especially for a school district this size, you guys should be doing discharge termination hearings more often than you do. I mean, just by sheer number. Okay? So yes, all of the state, they're, the larger school districts, Ms. Jeff, are probably doing two or three discharge hearings a year. They're, sometimes you're settled out and there's some negotiation, because it can be expensive. Because there's a lot of lawyer, a lot of lawyering involved in discharge hearings.
I guess part of the director's, because it's, it's, that's why people under, they call it a regular contract, or something like that?
It would depend on the contract.
At will, I think.
Yes. Yes, some, some employees are employed at will. They wouldn't get these due process rights. Clearly, employees that are given year-round contracts that are falling under the School Personnel Act, these due process provisions of hearing rights are clearly given to them in statute. Okay? Partial year, those type of things, those type of issues that happen, those are exceptions. At will employees don't do it. Some coaches that are not on full-year contracts, they do not get any of these due process rights. Clearly, all of the teachers do it. Of course, non-renewal or termination at the end of a school year, if there have not been issued a third-year contract, you don't get a hearing.
What, by doing that, would it not affect?
Well, what happens is the New Mexico School Personnel Act builds basically a probationary hearing. So it was supposed to be, you did not get tenure as a teacher or as any of you, you didn't get until your two or three years. Now, the federal court had originally ruled that you had to pitch your third year to get tenure. And the New Mexico courts reinterpret that and said, once you're issued your third-year contract, you're essentially tenured.
As a teacher, as a coach, how was the relationship?
Well, a teacher who's a coach, they, they, they're not, you don't provide them one contract that says you're a teacher slash coach. What they do is they have a teacher's contract, and then they'll be issued a partial year supplemental contract about the coaching and how they'll be paid for the coaches. It's actually ideal that your teachers are coaches because it eliminates a lot of the problems with overtime pay. Because teachers aren't, teachers are not subject to MLSA or exempt. So, for example, Texas, you can't, you cannot coach unless you're a teacher because the whole state decided they're not paying anybody overtime. So in Texas, all, you can't coach unless you're a teacher. In New Mexico, we do have that. We have volunteer contracts for other people to come and coach. You can have a teacher being a coach, but they're issued a separate contract. It is not a year-round contract. Because if you issue a year-round contract, coaches have the argument, so they say that they're tenured after three because if they have year-round duties. So the contract, the supplemental contract or the addendum contract for teachers has got to be for partial year only. So they never, they can never assert tenure as a coach.
On assuming the one that is doing hearing, is that for expulsion?
Expulsion or long-term, long-term suspension. Anytime you suspend, it couldn't longer than 10 days. They have a hearing right, and it usually ends with the Board.
So they can even commit to us for hearing?
Yes.
So should we be concerned that we haven't received one, a matter of all the law, we hear, and we haven't received one request?
Okay, it's really the parents that decide whether they want to take these appeal rights and go up. So it's not like it's automatic. It could be that the school disciplinary process, there's a hearing officer involved, issues an expulsion. And then if it's all in your, you should have a student disciplinary policy that sets out everything. It's also the PED regulations. PED regulations set out exactly what has to be done. And usually, their last appeal right is to the Board for any long-term suspension over 10 days or any expulsion. As the fact, the fact that New Mexico has set up the system in which there's delineated statutory authorities that Board has, and there's delineated statutory authorities that the superintendent has, because you have to remember, there's been discussion and people have thrown in, we've seen in the news, when they indicated HB 212. In 2003, much to the surprise of everybody involved, is the legislature passed House Code 212. And in the end, they did it, they made a wholesale change in how schools operated, much to the chagrin that maybe the local boards and the School Board Association didn't really know if this was coming down. It was usually, it was kind of driven by the unions at the time, because the unions were having, at that point, there was a lot of discord and kind of rub where the unions didn't like the fact that school boards were making personnel decisions. And they weren't, they weren't really thinking that that was the way they wanted to go. They helped pass HB 212, it got passed. Ironically, the boards would like to go back to a board who does personnel decisions, but the legislature has not wished to change or revoke HB 212. So there exist these two statutory authorities. It requires what I call a dance to be done. There has to be clear delineated understanding of what you guys do, where your authorities derive from, what you do with your authorities, and the superintendent and what he or she does with his or her authorities, and what they can do with the Board. For example, the, the setting of salaries for employees. Superintendent has the authority to do it, and has the authority to set salaries, but they can't pay them those salaries unless you approve the money to do it. So there has to be some sort of meeting of the minds and an understanding of, here's what I want to do with salaries, and the Board's understanding of, we're going to fund it. I want to do with salaries, and the board's understanding of, we're going to fund it. So, for example, the superintendent should be able to, there has to be another rub or friction, is you set up structure. Supposed superintendent says, I want X number of assistant superintendents. Well, that's all fine and dandy, they want to set up a structure that way, but if you don't fund it, there's no contracts that are issued, because you won't fund it. So there has to be some meeting of minds as to how things are going to go. And that means that there has to be a working relationship between the board, who's going to fund all of these things, and the superintendent, who would like to administer all of these things. And President, any questions?
So, are you talking about the operational plan? Where we're told this, these are the positions that we're going to be having within the school district this year?
I think the part that we kind of got caught up on was when we're receiving that, when we're towards the end, and if we're making changes, the contracts are already submitted to individuals, and that's a binding contract. So, we need to, should we, I think that request or that operational plan needs to come before the year ends for us to review it, because we don't know what contracts are going to go out the next year. Because once they submit those contracts and they sign it, that binds us.
Well, it does bind you, but the thing about it is you could go through the process of arguing that they were void because the board didn't approve the funding. The same thing that happens with any state agency. The legislature decides what money you're going to have, so you need to, as an agency, you need to plan your actions, or what you want to do based upon the amount of money you're going to get. So, what has happened, you need to understand, is you have to understand, that's why I encourage the board to be very, if you must focus your activities on something, you should focus your activities on learning and participating in the budgetary process. Because a lot of the planning that goes on for what the administration's going to do is going to be driven by whatever budget is going to come, and their estimation of the S E G, and the human value, and your federal funding that comes in, that kind of stuff, there's going to be, they obviously want to administer and operate everything within that budgetary scheme, but budget needs to be approved and done by you. The more you're involved in it, the more you can say, I want more money to go in this pot, instead of this pot, I want to go in this pot. Where you're not caught up in the uniform timeframe, you're being told, we've got to send this to P D, we've got to send it now, and you have, and you're now discovering issues in the budget that you would like to discuss, when it might not be feasible to do it and submit an unbalanced budget. And you want to submit an unbalanced budget, because that sustains your local rule. If you were to send up a budget that's unbalanced, because you guys didn't approve it, and the secretary has the ability to rewrite all of your budget for you, instead of something to you that you will do?
I have a question, Andy. When I was first appointed as the newly elected school superintendent, I went ahead and reviewed the, prior to my appointment, I read the agenda, and also read the comments. And I know that the school coordinators went ahead and voted and limited the budget. And I know that we have gone back to fully vote on this budget, at least the heads of the council. So, if that's the case, we as board members can go ahead and go back in and discuss this issue about, okay, because right now, my concern is about what's going to happen in San Antonio because of the contract. I know that we're going to get hit pretty hard on getting here. And so, that's going to be a huge issue. And so, I work with passionate teachers, and our staff as well, and so I think that this is something that we as a board are going to look at and review the best of. But the word needed before I came in, and it was active, that was the person.
Well, obviously, an approved budget got sent to the P D secretary within the statutory where she required it to be done, because you had your approved budget. Now, I mean, Ms. Sanchez gives you guys bars from now and then, you guys can relook at the budget. Now, with regards to, again, funds that have already been allocated and are committed through contract, R F P, or appointment, if there is an approved budget, which I assume you have an approved budget, with P D secretary, where they're changing your budget, to Paul Aguirre, is going to be that you have an approved budget, there's going to be certain amounts of monies that were committed along certain lines. At this point, those monies are probably going to be committed along with the contract lines that you already have in expenditures. If there's money that's not, that's an aligned item that's not being utilized, you guys probably have the ability to move it around, if the administration has an idea of where you want this stuff to go. In other words, can you reset the salary schedule? No, because you've got contracts issued under it already.
So as part of our budget that was approved, we did anticipate a shortfall in funding at the state level. So we do currently have a $2.5 million reserve, that has three different components for reasons that we could pull from that reserve. One of them is a reduction in the state equalization guarantee, the other is a reduction in funds from the federal level. So at the current time, any reductions that I have heard of to date, including the 1.5% state equalization guarantee decrease that is sitting on the governor's desk, we could facilitate within that $2.5 million, and still have more than half of it left.
So, Giovanna, I recall you telling me one time that the budget, the open budget, we can go and change things that are changing at any time? Is that what, could you explain that again?
So as Mr. Sanchez indicated, there are long-term commitments that we've already issued contracts for, those would be very difficult and possibly financially detrimental for us to attempt to modify at this time. However, there are probably some unencumbered funds that we have not yet put specifically to, we haven't issued contracts for them. I do want to kind of put out there that we do have funds that are obligated, i.e., if you look at our utilities, I don't have a long-term contract to pay the electricity, but we need to pay it in order for all of our students to be able to do their work. So that's an obligation that we have, that we will pay regardless.
Your budget's always, that's why you have bars, but you're going to have to fit it I've been doing this for a long time, and I still don't understand anything that goes along in a school budget. And I've tried, and I've been to hundreds of these meetings, and it is a very difficult process. It is highly regulated, I'm sure that you're even having more regulation because of your offset federal funds that come in and what they're used for. You know, your S B nine monies have certain limitations, you can't do this with that, but you can't do that with that. You have capital outlays restricted in certain ways and certain ways. If you have obligation bonds or general bonds, you don't have any of those, but if you have them, they would also be subject to certain limitations and questions. So it's always a question of having that. So, I guess my point is this, is the more you know about the budgetary process, the more capable you are of looking at those unencumbered funds later in the budgetary cycle, and moving them around, and understanding. Otherwise, you're dependent on, you know, P N F's charging support for electricity, we have to do this, we have to do that, you guys are behind the curve with regards to what to do with those funds.
Okay, with that, Giovanna, with like bonuses and the addenda, are those contracts? Are they called contract addenda?
Yes, so with addenda, are issued the supplemental contracts as stated by Mr. Sanchez, and in the retention and retaining of the sentence, those are issued out as part of the agreement for them to be in charge of the school district. They both put in writing in the apparatus that they were issued.
So the addenda, we discussed that, we wanted to have discussion on as far as the administration receiving the addenda for $5,000, is that contracted?
All the addenda have supplemental contracts attached to them.
Okay, my question, I have a comment, Garcia, please.
Okay, Mr. Sanchez. It occurs to me, there's a combination of things connecting in my mind. One is, we're told that the board authority is over essentially all budget expenditure areas, and then looking back at your idea of what authority is versus how it's handled in terms of delegated duties and so on. We have a situation, and this just comes from, but I'm picking, maybe it's just a concrete example of something that I know we've dealt with. But, the point is, when we approve a budget, in I will call it partially justified, in other words, you don't have every detail of what builds an area of budget. You have some things that business office obviously has, that's something to build the budget, and some things for that, but it's also by categories. So the example we got, for example, when it comes to recruiting teachers. So we had some questions earlier this year, about why are we going so far to recruit teachers, and we're not seeming to do as much effort locally? Well, the answer was, there's a shortage of teachers coming out of the universities even for our area, so we need to go for them. So you don't, so what I'm saying is, we went through that, and just a concrete thing of saying, well, we have a budget for recruiting, right? But that isn't fleshed out in every detail, and we're going to go right to this spot, and we're going to make this, you know? So we approved it by categories, and yet we had questions about, why are we doing it this way? And yet, that was the rightful duty of the authority, and so on, the personnel office go out and recruit. So, and so, again, what I'm getting at is, get back to where is the line of interest to micromanage it then? Because I've already had questions, had an interest in that, we've had questions, we've got answers, explanations, but I'm trying to think of very specific things that...
Well, like I said, all of this is perception. Okay? When you look at this, like recruiting, essentially what it needs to do is, is the superintendent's authority to hire and fire. So, he's in charge of recruiting. So the superintendent says, I want to recruit South Dakota, for whatever, for the sake of coming up with a state name, okay? He wants to recruit. He's going to, what he needs to come to you is says, look, I'm going to offer $10,000 to every teacher that accepts employment with me, I'm going to give them $10,000 signing bonus, just like the NFL. You sign with me, I'll give you 2 grand, okay? Well, he's got to come to you to ask you, I intend to hire 100 teachers, I'm going to give them all $10,000 to sign with me, so that they'll come to these hard to fill places. You guys are going to have to approve the expenditure of the money, okay? Can you ask questions about why we're going to South Dakota? Yes. Okay? And if you don't like the answer, which is, I just like people from South Dakota, you can say, well, we don't really like the way that that's happening, and you make it an invaluable function of whether or not you believe the superintendent's doing this job. Now, it is not uncommon, and it's been encouraged for you guys to consider these type of recruitment, about strategies, okay? For all intents purposes, if you can't make them, in other words, you can't create your own teachers, for example, Mount Air, for example, they have, you know, five mother-daughter teams. They seem to just create their own teachers, okay? They go off school, come back to Mount Air, and they teach. If you can't create them, then steal them. So if you offer $10,000 to a teacher from Central who's currently at Central, and then come down to your school district to teach, now you've got, you know, a math teacher, when you didn't have a math teacher, it's incumbent upon Central to go into Cortez, Colorado, and steal a teacher there with a signing bonus, okay? And the fact of the matter is, the pool is smaller. Not this last year, but the year before, there were less than 20 graduates from the School of Education from New Mexico State. And you can guess where they go. A P S in Ostrusis have the first bite of the apple in most ones. So now, you're essentially, now you have to work outside for them. School districts like Unis, they just, you get housing, you get this, or incentives, you offer across the board. In other words, if you're a math teacher, you're certified in math, you're certified in science, we'll give you free teacher housing, and we'll give you a signing bonus if you'll come here. They take them from Hogs, they take them from Texas, and they come in, and for some teachers, even driving two and a half hours to come in for a $10,000 bonus on signing is worth it to them, that you have a math teacher. Okay? But you fund that, so you're going to have to have some working relationship with the superintendent who wants to do that type of recruiting, okay?
So, I guess this is for Giovanna. Can you give us a copy of the breakdown of those employees that are, that are trying to recruit with their incentives? I'd like to see a copy of that, versus, and then how are we working with ARON in-state for New Mexico to hire teachers in-state versus those out-of-state? Or is it the same for both for the incentives? I just kind of want to break down all that, if you can give me a copy.
You can answer, but Ms. Ray, I'm going to defer to Mr. Hayek, that's more on the personnel side.
This is Jeff. We currently recruit, we look internally for the state of New Mexico to recruit first, and then we look at the national statistics of where there is an excess number of teachers, where teachers cannot find a job second. So we do first go to, for example, we do recruit U N M, Mexico State University, Fort Lewis, just go down the line. And then, at the same time, we know, due to the statistics coming out of those schools, that they do not have enough teachers to supply the state of New Mexico. So then we automatically start looking at states outside of New Mexico. For the past two years, the excess teachers have typically come from like the Northeast, and some areas that are far away. This last year, though, we have noticed the trend has come closer to home, for example, Oklahoma has excess teachers. We did do some recruiting last year in Utah, because they have excess teachers. Arizona has a jumble with their budgets, they have excess teachers. So that's how we plan our recruitment. As we have recruited, we've also found that we need to be more competitive. Gallup is not people's first place that they want to go on average. And so, that's why we started looking at incentives, ways that we can be creative in attracting teachers to this area. And so that's how the idea of signing incentives and free housing to help get them here, so that we can have the hopes of retaining those teachers here in Mexico. I think that's...
Yes, you covered it all.
And in addition, one more piece is that we look at specific jobs that are hard to fill, and that's where we look first for the signing incentives. So for example, as Mr. Sanchez mentioned, math is a high-need area, so our signing incentive for math is higher than, say, for English, because we're typically teachers that are easier to find.
Mr. Hayek, so, one of the questions she asked was, is it equal though? I mean, let's say we have to find a math teacher here in New Mexico, versus a math teacher in South Dakota, North Dakota, is the incentive the same that we offer, whether it's in-state or out-of-state?
Yes, we offer it to anybody that's hired in the district, if it qualifies for incentive, and they receive that incentive, no matter where they come from. Whether they could come from Gallup, they actually could be an E A in the district, we still give them that incentive.
There's a lot of strategies that can be used. Some school districts have undertaken a tuition reimbursement program. If you're an E A or something like that, and you'll go and become a teacher, we will pay your tuition, and then you owe us on a pro rata basis the return time. So, those programs exist, and that's how they can do stuff. With regards to these communications issues... With regards to these communications issues, you guys can, you know, board members, you can have an issue if it's, you know, here's a line item for recruitment, and there's no delineation of what's going on. So in other words, you approve the budget to just have X number of dollars in the recruitment line. You may have issues when you're ready to recruit, we're paying you, but how much money for what? Those are the type of issues that you could be, if you're involved in the budgetary process, you understand, or you can ask the question of, how many teachers are you anticipating from Oklahoma to get, and how much you would want to spend on them? So those are the type of questions you can ask and get answers from with regards to that particular line item, okay? But it does require frank, honest communications between a lot of these issues, between among board members as well, to understand what as board members, what you want to do, what you don't want to do. Also, with parents and community, you also have to, you need to obviously be a conduit for information to your constituency, so you need to have a clear understanding of what you know is the process and how it's working. And also, of course, chain of command with employees is, there is a chain of command, and they need to be referred to that with regards to employment matters. Okay, their code of ethics, you need to attend all meetings, you need to recognize that you don't have any legal authority as a board outside of the board meetings, so if there's things that you want to implement and do, you have to start thinking about, is it on my agenda? Is there an action item? Can we vote on that? If you want to make things as a board happen, this is the vehicle you use, is your board meetings with your, in compliance with the Board of Representatives Act. Also, you need to work in harmony. You may be on the business end of a three-two vote, but it's a decision, the rest of the board members have to come along, at least for the ride. And so it's a decision until the vote structure changes, and you can change it back the other way or something happens. Again, be careful about what hat you're wearing at any particular moment. If you're, if you're a parent, you're going to school, make sure you try as best you can to relay to everybody around you that you're wearing, you're wearing your parent hat, because a board member showing up at a school can't get, can garnish attention. So if you're not wearing your board member hat, then make sure you're at least letting somebody know that you're not wearing that particular hat that time, okay? Also, be conscious about whether you're speaking for the board or you're speaking for yourself. You maybe ask questions from the media, and if you, if this is not something the board has decided to do with regards to a standard from the media, then you probably should let the media know, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just telling you, here's my perception of what happened as an individual board member.
I have a question. Rock the question. So what if it's an employee that wants you to do a little interest for them? And so you end up signing your name as a board member. Is that abnormal? Because you did that for an employee, and it's an employee that's maybe wanted to get hired within the district?
Well, you would, you would have, you could do it as a board member. You would have to do it as an individual, saying, this is what I know about this person, because, the board didn't authorize it, because also you guys can't, you guys don't have statute of authority to recommend anything to the superintendent about a hiring.
So if that's the case, what actions can we take? Because if, let's say I did that, what would happen to me? I mean, because I didn't get the board's approval, but I went ahead and did a, where of interest for employee or...
Just make sure that, you know, if the letter was to go to somebody in the administration, just make sure you say, this, I'm writing on behalf of myself, not on behalf of the board. And they should realize that you're not speaking on behalf of the board.
Even if they sign it out, like Sandra put, Sandra, Jeff, Gallup in the county board.
Now you can't do no bad for the board. You can make, you guys can write a letter of recommendation for anybody you want, you should put, this is my observations of me personally as a private citizen. You may be able to point to the fact that you have a certain level of exposure and expertise in the, in the profession, to be able to, to opine about somebody who seems like they're a failure.
So would that be a violation of the open, any lack, because I did that for an employee? Or what, what kind of...
No, you're just, you know, you just, you don't have, you never have the authority to begin with.
Even if...
Yeah, it just has to be, it just has to be clear, you just have to clarify to whoever's getting the letter, look, I wrote that as me, me myself. Okay? Obviously, upgrade your performance, I know that the board president was talking about going to these seminars, learning as much as you can. You guys need to, I mean, it's changing, you guys definitely do that, if you go as to go to NSBA, or you go and do all these other things, you should do that. In terms of upgrading your performance with regards to those issues, obviously with the Native American population that you have, there's gonna be specialized training that you could, in fact, the knowledge you could obtain with regards to education with regards to Native Americans. Support the employment of those that are best qualified to serve. So again, this is one of those where the struggle, it's also in your best interest as a person, as the entity that could be sued, is that you always want the superintendent to be hiring the best possible candidates that are available, so that you can minimize your liability with regards to those issues. Okay? Don't push up in a conflict of interest, refrain from using your board position for any gain. You accept the primary function is to establish a policy by which they'll be administered, and you expect the superintendent, administration will administer consistent with those policies. Welcome and encourage active participation by citizens. Obviously, you are, you know, you're elected by, by your constituencies, so they're, they're, whether intentionally or unintentionally, they're evaluating you in terms of how they want the schools to operate, and how, what they expect you to be doing with regards to, obviously, their input is very important from it, and obviously, I treat the Democratic, we do that through all our policies and procedures and our rules. Obviously, we want to, all of the laws, talk about fair and equitable educational opportunities for all our kids, so that's part of your policies and procedures, and always underlines what you do. Okay? Meet, discuss, take action only in open meetings, if there's a forum, notice of meetings, executive sessions, all of those are part of the Open Meeting Act, public involvement. Obviously, the Open Meetings Act does not require you to have public comment at any of your board meetings, so if you choose to do so, that is something that you've decided you can do that. The public has a right to see how you walk great, but they don't necessarily have a right in other words, being able to participate in that process. So also, we've talked about that before, about whether you have an open forum or a limited forum. You guys can discuss that under your policy development, or what you would like to do with that.
So with the public comment, somebody gets up and starts speaking, and we try to tell them, you can't say this and say that, or you can't say somebody's name, are we, are we wrong?
Yes. If you have an open forum, public comment, if somebody wants to come up there and tell you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my recipe for these cochitos, you're gonna, okay, thank you. And you're gonna say, thank you very much for the public comment, they can use your comments to do that. Okay? If you have an open forum, anybody can come up and talk about anything they want to talk about. Includes personnel matters. So now, a person who comes up and speaks, they're gonna be personally responsible for their own comments. So if you come up in a public comment section in a public meeting, and you decide that you're gonna defame and slander another individual, you may be subject to liability as that individual, if their reputation or ability or interest in the rule. The board's not gonna sue them, the individual is gonna be the subject of it. So if somebody comes up and decides they're gonna call a teacher a very bad name, or accuse them of very bad conduct, that teacher wants to, they can sue that individual for defamation or smandering.
But we can't put guidelines around like, limited to three minutes to five minutes. We can't put those kind of timeframes on public comment.
Yes, you can, but it has to be reasonable. No, because you're, you can't do that. If you're gonna hold it five minutes, you hold five minutes, you're into the most interesting of conversations, okay? Because you are now, you're making a decision about their access and their abilities to be publicly based on the content of their speech. You guys cannot act on the content of speech at all. So, now it has to be reasonable. If you, if you allot, in this situation, you don't have a specific allotment of time, so you can limit speech to five minutes or whatever, but suppose that you have a policy where you say there's gonna be a 30-minute public comment period? Well, if only one person gets to talk, that's what they get to talk for. They get to talk for 30 minutes. So you need to be aware of what are you, what are you putting out there. Of course, with a limited public forum, if you want to, you can create a policy that that changes your board meetings to a limited public forum, in which you say, public comment is only gonna be accepted on agenda items. There's certain benefits to that if you want. For, for example, in an open forum, somebody wants to come up here and talk about something that's not on your agenda, you have to say, thank you very much, you can interact, you can't talk, you just say, thank you, next. If you have a limited public forum, it's limited to the agenda, if somebody wants to come up and make a public comment about the agenda item, you can actually interact with numbers of people, because it's already on your agenda.
I, I think with that, when I was a board member, the thing that bothered me about that was I wanted to come and speak, and that's how it was, it was only limited to agenda items. But every time I wanted to come, it wasn't on the agenda, so I, I kept trying to look at the agenda to see what it was, you know? I don't know, that was just very restrictive for me as a parent, to try to like, like an example, like transportation. We have transportation, I think, once this year on the agenda, maybe twice, but they're not on there all the time. You know, special education, you know, that's why we started that rotation, but they're not on the agenda all the time. So it only limits us to the times that that was on the agenda.
So you made a set that an open forum works for you, but along with the, the ability of a parent to come in and say, I want to talk about this, even though it's not on your agenda, you also get to have everybody else who wants to say something. They also get to talk. Okay? So meetings in minutes, under the Open Meetings Act, that there has to be a draft prepared for your next meeting of the previous meetings' minutes. Okay? So within 10 days of your last meeting, you have to be a draft, and they have to be submitted for your approval at your next, next meeting. It's not a special meeting, it's your next regular. Okay? Rolling forums, obviously, you can't communicate, you can't make your decisions with regards to email, telephone calls. So basically, you guys can communicate with each other when you're trying to schedule something, I want this on the agenda, I want that on the agenda, I want to do this, this. Those are completely permissible communications, but it can't be, I'm gonna support that, that vote, what do you think? I'll support it too, I'll get my support, and you probably done rolling a forum, and you can't do that. It's just gonna be agenda items, scheduling, and those types of issues. That means you can, you can be at a restaurant, you can be in a car together, long as you can't do that. The problem that you have is if somebody sees three of you together, they can make the perception that you've now talked about official business, and how do you prove it? How do you prove you didn't talk about something? The only other way to do that is if you're, suppose you took a, three of you took a, a school vehicle to, to this meeting. Administrator with you, so that there's a witness that you guys did talk about official business, and there was... Sometimes perception, how do you prove it? You just have to allege it. So what happens is perception becomes reality at that point. So you need safeguard guest practices, because if you can't have three of you together, you're just trying to transport yourself to and from someplace, take an administrator, take somebody else with you. Okay? The procedures for conduct of the meetings, you can depend on how you want to do that. NSBA has a website. Nobody does, nobody does Robert's, whose word, in their purest form. Everybody does some sort of abbreviated Roberts with regards to how they conduct meetings and effective meetings with regards to that. And some, and in some school districts, they don't even take a second motion sufficient enough to get something to a vote.
I have one last question. Going back to, somebody who wants to have a hearing as a, as a student or staff, employee, who, who could they go to to submit their, say that they want to have a hearing? Would they submit that to the superintendent, or would they submit that to the president?
No, it's all done by statute, and it's all directed by the procedures. For example, the termination statute, you have a certain number of days to submit a request to the superintendent. And if you get the request within that period of time, certain things, it's all driven by statutes. It is a complete playbook about what happens and when it happens, are in the statute of the School Personnel Act with regards to those hearings. With regards to student hearings, the regulation from the P D goes through step by step, by step, and that is a transbar.
I mean, I don't know, to me, something like that, that if administration don't want to have a hearing, or don't want, they don't have a hearing, that, I mean, to me, that, I don't know, if they make it harder and harder for the person to have a hearing, then the guy, well, you don't want him to have any hearing, and that's the end of it. But when the school board never hears, and you think everywhere about it, until way later, since life's submitted, wouldn't want to have a hearing, and what happens to it, we're like, we don't know?
No, it usually doesn't happen that way. There's usually, there's no way to really hide the fact that somebody's requesting a hearing that's preemptive of my statute. First of all, if you only go to a lawyer, it's pretty much gonna happen. Second of all, most of the time, the union is one on top of this, okay? And also, the unions, even if you don't have a CBA, NEA, NFT are more than happy to help any employee get to the hearing. They won't represent them, but they'll get them too. So the statute always very defined about what happens. There's really no way the administration, I can't say no way, but there's really no way, really technical to the administration, to say, I'm not giving you a hearing, when it's actually really, it's called for. The hearing night? Well, the forms, the, the actual notice of intent to discharge, the actual termination hearing provisions that have to be given to you with notice are actually driven by statutes as well. So the letter that tells you what you're gonna do has specifically to tell you that you have a right to a hearing, including the statute that tells you that you have a right to independent arbitration. Okay? Go through the board orientation, get training, have access to the School Personnel Manual, all your policy manuals. You guys need to be familiar with your own policies. You guys should be spending part of every regular meeting addressing a policy development issue. Your policies are probably outdated, you probably need to get them out there, and so you probably should be spending some time doing policy development, along with all the stuff, the tons of other stuff that you have to do. Receive they're consistent with board policy, you have to propose additional current items in the agenda. These are all the things that you have a right as a board member. If you call the board president, the board president or the superintendent will not put it on the agenda. If you want to, when you get to your new business section of a board meeting, you could place, you could put on there, I move that so-and-so be placed on the agenda for our next meeting, and why is it following the vote? If there was a vote to say it would be on the agenda, that is gonna be on your agenda for the next meeting. Okay? So there's ways to work around it. Meetings should start on time, stay on task, be reasonable, move through, begin consideration and intermittent consideration, changes to the agenda is approved, consistent with liberal restraints. You can change the agenda with regards to discussion items, but you cannot without 72 hours' notice, change any action item. Okay? Opportunity to request justification, alternative consequences for items presented for a decision and participate in full discussion. So yes, you can, when you're saying, we need you to approve this, we want you to do it, you can ask, what are the alternatives? What can we do instead of doing this? You're entitled to do that, it's part of your abilities as a board member to vote. If you want us to approve us, if we have questions on alternatives, you have to be willing to say that.
On the agenda items, if this is not being given to me as a board president to review, and it's just posted, and then can I just call and say, there's a lot of votes, we're gonna stop this meeting, and tell I have it, or we review it? Can that be...
Yeah, whatever you're, whatever you have set up in your policy as to how agendas are set, you can enforce that. If the, I understand your current policy is the board president, superintendent set the agenda. Well, then it takes two to set the agenda.
Use the mic, please.
Sorry.
The way I recall the policy, a member has the, the right up there to submit items for the agenda, and the only basis on which that is to be pulled from the agenda is if it's seen, forcing that there won't be adequate time to consider that. I think that's the way our policies have, could we do that?
Yeah, if that's what your policy says, then that's what it is. If you're a member, you can submit to the board president, we would like this on the agenda, and then you, you'll have to work with how long your board meetings are from last. Do you express opinions during board meetings about interruption or ridicule? Obviously, if you're, if you're a board member, if you're having any kind of vote, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some that don't get what they want by accepting a unanimous vote. Be candid during the legal call sessions about concerns, confidentiality, restricted speeds. Obviously, executive sessions are exactly what that is, they're not open to the public, they're not supposed to be discussed with the public. It's a chance for you to have the conversations you need to have with the statute. The statute says that you can do confidentiality, such as getting attorney, legal advice from your counsel, dealing with personnel issues, that kind of stuff. So please honor those. Do that. Any board member can break up an issue saying, "Look, I think we're violating the Open Meetings Act, we need to stop or read, look at this", and it's responsible, any board member saying, "Look, I'm not comfortable with this. Let's figure out what we need to do to get this done under the Open Meetings Act." Opportunity to request, explain a vote or statement. You do have that opportunity under generally accepted practice for why you want a meeting. You can be on the business end of a 3-2 vote. If you would like to express yourself, "This is why I voted the way I did", you have that opportunity, and you can't be put off from doing so. Participate in process of selected officers. You really should do that once every, you guys decide when you do that. Some of them are minimum of once a year, some of them are whenever. Some school districts, the board president's been the board president for the last decade. So it is what it is. Opportunity to participate in all policy functions, including board processes.
For Jones's sake, sometimes we do explain ourselves, and there could be a time where you want to pin the record. I think that's what that is preferred. So we indicate that we want, we could either do it in writing for that?
Yes, you could.
I would just think that maybe the argument is whether we're saying something just for the process right then, or if we really want it.
Well, the thing about this is that your minutes aren't a record. They're technically supposed to make sure that the people who said they were there were there. The votes were actually taken with the board president, and nobody, and there wasn't anybody changing any votes. Okay? That's the minimum requirement. They're not supposed to be verbatim recounting what happened. It's really not for any of those issues. So if you would like that, you can either issue a statement, or you can ask, "I would like the board minutes to reflect this", but there's no really requirement that they give the minutes verbatim the way you want. Because it's just supposed to accurately, only accurately reflect the votes.
How do we enforce our executive? How do we enforce our executive sessions? There's a lot of things that we discuss in an executive session. And two days later, we're hearing people talk about it, or somebody else is saying something about it. I mean, those are, I mean, I thought that anything that's said in an executive session is supposed to say in the executive session is confidential. But we're always hearing, "So, you know, this is what was said in the executive session", and how do we handle that?
Well, it depends on where you come to the conclusion of where it's coming from. If you believe it's another board member that has disclosed things, you can publicly censure the board member saying, "We believe that you can give them the confidential information, we'd like you to stop doing it", and you publicly censure. The real effect of that is they run for office again, and an opponent says they don't get along, they publicly censure. Worst-case scenario that I've seen this happen with collective bargaining agreements, in which a board member was giving, telling the union how much money they were willing to spend, blah, 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 that kind of stuff, is the rest of the board actually had to go to court and get a court order telling the board member not to do any more. That was an extreme case in regards to C V negotiations. Okay, we have expressed personal opinions of view, both quietly. No attempt is made to undermine the board's action, misrepresent the majority, board opinion or otherwise violate a policy, school board members are going to the rights. The opportunity to participate in regular self-evaluation. I encourage boards to self-evaluate themselves. Access relevant data obtained in district and board performance. You need to know how you can measure what you do. You need to also measure how the school district is doing other than word of mouth or, you know, how many complaints or non-complaints you get. It may not be an accurate reflection of how well or how bad the school district is doing. Any questions? That we didn't already address?
I have one about the confidentiality. As you know, in our history, or in our history, that question of personnel matters being automatically... I'm not talking about public comment questions, or Republican, or Democrat. But the idea that any personnel matter is confidential that the board deals with. At the beginning of that thing, what would it be, executive session or hand? And then the question we had here, go over the certain investigation, and the board refused officially to release any information because this was a personnel matter, and as a lawyer, in my understanding, first of protection of the individual. That ended, let's call it personnel matters automatically confidential as far as public discussion.
Well, here's one thing. First of all, you have one employee, that's your superintendent. So obviously, when you're done with the superintendent on issues of his or her employment, it's a personnel matter. Now, the Inspection Public Records Act indicates that matters put into a personnel file are not subject or not for public consumption. So basically, most of a lot of the things that go into a personnel file that have to do with discipline or other things that have to do are matters of opinion. Now, there is the lawsuit with regards to the APS superintendent, where the media is saying that the superintendent is such, of such prominent public stature that any investigative documents related to the superintendent should be out. That court has not decided. You guys are now embroiled in a lawsuit in which your local paper is asking for you to use the investigative documents that you have. But those are matters of opinion in public. Our interpretation is it is a matter of opinion in personnel file, therefore, it's not for public consumption. Therefore, it's confidential under the Inspection Public Records Act. The other issue is, I mean, if you release it for the superintendent, then you're released, then why don't you release it for a school principal or an assistant principal? And there's no way for the pinball to stop. Next thing you know is, "Well, why can't it?" I know, I'm a parent, why shouldn't I send a personnel file of my teacher, of my son's or daughter's teacher? So this is a slippery slope, or it's happening. So we are litigating whether or not this is a personnel matter or not. Okay? Now, in the executive session, the school superintendent can give you a personnel report about the personnel matters that he is dealing with. Those are equally matters of opinion in personnel file or derived from it. And also, there is a standard public policy that everything that happens to employees is not for public consumption. And they have a right to privacy. So when you have an executive session in which the superintendent's giving a report, you are not directing personnel matters, you are receiving a report. How many people complain, how many grievances? What were the grievances about? Those are issues that could come up to the board, and you could be reported so that you get information on.
Is that really fair to the... Is that really fair to the employees? I'm thinking back, you know, like if I was discussing in an executive session as a teacher, and all the bad things were brought up on me, but I don't even have a voice. I mean, I didn't have my side told, you know what I mean? I mean, are we doing the service that we're hearing this one side of the story, and we're not hearing the other side?
No, because the report should be, oh, let me...
That's true.
The report should not be, "Hey, can you give me a thumbs up of whether or not I should fire this person"? It should be, "Look, you got a complaint about this employee, and this is what's happening." In fact, I would recommend superintendent, they do not give you names in case that person gets fired, and then subsequently asks you for a hearing. You can hear it. So there probably should be subject matters. What are the issues that are at play here? What's going on? Is it a safety issue, that kind of stuff? So that when a parent comes to you, you understand. Or somebody says there's a problem, that it happened in this middle school, and you would know as representative of ground point, "Okay, I know what's going on." You may not, they may ask you, "Well, what's the teacher's name"? You can say, "And then tell me, and I don't want to know, because I might be doing a discharge early later, but I'm aware of it, and you're just getting information." It's also not an avenue for you to say, "You know what? That person needs to go", or an avenue for you to say, "No, that's paper, I should stay". It's basically for you to be given information with regards to, the superintendent's still routines, the ability to make the personnel decisions. And they should be free to do so.
In executive session, are we allowed to ask for the process of, you know, what went on as far as interviews and, you know, scoring? I mean, knowing that superintendent may be making assumptions to things that aren't true?
No, because then you're... That employee belongs to him. Now, you can ask questions about, "Well, what process did you follow"? And you might determine whether or not that makes it, you're going to say, "Oh, I don't like the way he does things, so my valuations are going to reflect that". But no, the presumption is that you already have established your policies and procedures with regards to personnel, and the superintendent's following them. Okay? So your policies and procedures should have fair equitable treatment when you're being investigated and what's going on with you. So if they're on administrative leave, they pay to conduct an investigation, they get a term, whatever, that's information you can have. The process itself is pretty much already dictated. I assume, like everybody, you guys follow the same process with regards to any investigation or anything like that. So it's always the same process over and over again, which is great, because that means don't treat it very different. Even if you do it wrong, do it consistently longer than time.
If there's an employee that is on administrative leave, do they, are they able to come back to the school and help, like, at the Girl Scout fundraising or volleyball game? Or are they, if they're under administrative leave, are they allowed to come back to the school?
It will depend. If they're a parent, and they want to participate in child education, there's going to have to be concessions made. These are all employment duties, responsibilities? No, because there's a reason why they take them out of the workplace. First of all, you do to investigate something. But the worst thing you can do is, stick to worst-case scenario, sexual harassment. Andy keeps asking me out. It's now becoming harassment. Where you take me out of the workplace so that I can't influence anything that's going on? Also, you don't have the alleged victim saying, "I complained about it", and there's Andy every day, sitting outside my classroom staring at me. So the school district will still hurtly and differently. So, and which creates liability. So you take them out, you investigate it. Sometimes it's one day, sometimes it's a month. It depends on what the investigation is. Either they come back, or they get disciplined.
But then they can say, "Oh, well, I'm a parent, I'm just waiting here for my child".
And there probably should be a means by which the parent, their interaction as a parent is controlled so that the alleged victim is okay and is protected. Until you get resolved. Once you've adjudicated, nothing happened, or there wasn't harassment, then you resolve the issue with all the employees, and the person comes back.
Minini, would you like a coffee with a power plant?
I have it on your home. Been through all this.
Many, many times, I know you.
And I've been through two investigations as a board member. And you don't know what one is until you sit through those for two days, for three days.
Right, after I'm done, then I press go.
Well, thank you, that was very informative. I've been through this training several times too, but I still learned something new today. Thank you.
Board members, I would like to be excused to leave. I requested this prior to this. I have my yaj. He's very upset with me right now, but I had to do this too. Tom, turn it over to Kevin. Kevin, can you please continue the meeting for me? Thank you, thank you, board members, very much.
Okay, we're down to G, which is... Okay, legislation. Do we have anybody for legislation and government budget update? Nobody? Okay, we'll move to seven. Do we have anybody here for the administration and technical board meeting discussion? No. So we're, can we do this, new business? G. Approval. Okay, with that, do we have any motions to move the budget update to the next meeting? Or... Okay. Well, we'll have the two just automatically moved to the next one meeting. Okay, we'll move to G. Approval to remove the temporary cash transfer from Fund 31700 back to Fund 11,000, and the permanent transfer of cash from Fund 31700 to the newly established Fund 31701.
Mr. Mitchell, members of the board, members of the audience. I know we had briefly discussed this during the implementation of the temporary cash transfers in June and July. The Public Education Department has established a newly approved account, which is 31701, which will hold the local revenues, which is ad lourum and gas and oil taxes, in addition to any cash carry forward. 31700 will remain the state match for Senate Bill 9, and will not have a cash balance, and will require temporary cash transfers. The state has decided to do this in order to facilitate transparency for auditing purposes. It is a very good move for the state, in my opinion, and likely several other individuals, because it is very confusing to have a reversible fund in the same fund with a cash balance fund. So what this will do with, Mr. Minini, I had you in heart when I put this together. I put these two action items together, which was ensuring that we did the temporary cash transfer reversal because we have been reimbursed for our $2 million reimbursements, and then also the movement of the permanent cash transfer. I also attached a memo from Mr. Paul Aguilar, which gives us the approval to do this. State statute does require two things when a fund is approved. One is local board approval, the second is the New Mexico Public Education Department approval. As they have created this fund, they have issued a one-time, like, approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
I did look this over ahead of time, and it seems to me to be a reasonable explanation. And also, I don't know that we have a choice anyway. It's something that needs to be done. I move approval of that.
Motion to approve my Mr. Hiddeman roll call?
Mr. Minini?
Yes?
Ms. Jeff?
Yes?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes?
Okay, with that, we'll move to H. Approval of Johnson-on-Malley Corrective Action Plan. Mike, did you want to present that?
Mr. Mitchell, Department of Education. I do not want to present over that because I am not directly involved in that Corrective Action Plan. I was a part of the creation of the draft. Other than that, I have no information.
Mr. Sanchez, do we have a timeframe on this that we need to get this through?
The board has already approved the draft. We want that, I've already mentioned to the P D secretary. So I don't think there's anything, I think the item is supposed to be on the agenda, was supposed to be, if there was any issues with superintendent, to modify the plan, that that was supposed to be brought up here today. I don't believe that there was any revised corrective action plan submitted with regards to that.
Okay, hold on. We have a question for Mr. Hiddeman.
Thank you, I have a question, and I have a comment. The question is... The question is to double-check understanding who this is directed, or who this is to be provided to this plan. I understand, right, this is part of the thing with either Aguilar or Scandera, so that we're responding to their directives. And internally, we have an issue, I think, that's been raised with communication to the board about whether the Indian Education Committee has received this information, whether they should properly be involved in giving their sanction approval to it too. But my thought is, when we had this, this goes back to, I believe, to the Manning report. We still have that objectionable word in the title of this plan, because I think the majority of the board, I'll say, has rejected the term audit for certain reasons for that. But nevertheless, I think, my thinking, and I think some of us agree somewhat with this, if there's something we could learn, or something we did learn from that Manning report, to do something constructive with it, for our sake, we should do it. We have a plan. Pick up the items in there that can be addressed for some improvement. And so to have a plan as to how to use those items, fine. At the same time, because it deals directly with Indian education funds that are direct interest and respond, have some to the Indian Education Committee, and they have a role in that. My thought, board members, is that we sustain our approval of the use of this plan and sending it to the state that is useful to us. And secondly, that we make a directive to the superintendent to get the communication completed with the I E C on what this plan includes. I am not quite clear. I know I was at one I E C meeting a while back where I thought he explained, he did explain why certain funds have not been, certain expenditures have not been approved that had to do with the fact that some issues were told. That wasn't exactly at this point. Then there was another meeting where I think he was on the agenda. I was there to present this, and then he didn't. He wasn't there. And then there've been several, and I'm not quite clear on all this, because there've been several I E C meetings since then. But the communication we had as a board, I emailed today, was that it never did get shared with the I E C. So I think it'd be appropriate for us to direct the superintendent to as quickly as possible to share this with the I E C and not bypass that on. And meanwhile, with our board responsibility to respond or deal with the thing we got from the state, I think we probably do two parts. If we can deal with the state and else, and make sure the I E C is getting the information.
I think that you're talking about...
Sorry, that's the long one.
I think we've got two things going on here. First of all, for whatever intents purposes that you, the board, has intended, the Manning report was accepted by the Deputy Secretary as an audit. And he directed that corrective action plan be made consistent with the findings of that document. Now, I understand the board has sought and sought approval to get an auditor to confirm the findings of that report. And that still needs to be done by the board with regards to the scope of work that this second auditor is going to do. So the correction action plan is not addressing, is addressing school district safeguard procedures with regards to the funding. That has to be consistent with the J O M office from Navajo Nation, who is the actual administrator of the J O M funds. They're the ones who seek it from the federal government, and therefore, it's their office that dictates that. My understanding is the corrective action plan is consistent with the J O M office and Navajo Nation. Now, there has been discussion with the board with regards to whether or not you guys should be the allocating authority or requester of J O M funds directed from the federal government, since you are a majority Native American Board of Education, which changes the relationship that you would have with your I E C. Now, that's a separate discussion that's going to happen. With regards to the I E C having to approve this corrective action plan, Mr., I don't believe that they're going to have any input with regards to the safeguards of funding that the issues of the audit raised. I think there are some issues with regards to who can be on the I E C and that kind of stuff. But those issues are relative to the I E C's relationship with J O M Navajo Nation. It's the J O M Navajo Nation that's dictating some of these issues, like, right regards to, for example, one issue is whether a school employee can be a member of the I E C. That is an issue that is being resolved from the, my opinion, from the J O M office of Navajo Nation that is saying that once they finish their terms, school employees will no longer be members of the I E C. Okay? So I don't think that you have the ability, the board can't say, "Well, we're not going to submit this corrective action plan." Because subsequent, last week before, when it was the board's obligation to submit the correction action plan, Deputy Secretary Aguilar sent an email indicating that it was now going to be the superintendent's responsibility to send the correction action plan and to indicate to the P D where they were in that process. What I would suggest, Mr. Hittman, is that you not, you don't have to approve this corrective action plan, because it was already approved at draft floor at your meeting. It was already submitted to the P D. What you want to do is you want to have a discussion with superintendent about the interaction and fulfilling the correction action plan with regards to the communications with the I E C, because there are some things that are going to implicate them, such as their membership. The other issue that you have with that is that you need to be cognizant is your follow-up report. If you get the auditor on the job to do the follow-up on the Manning report, they can confirm or review the findings. If you get a separate report from a separate auditor that somehow is different, requires separate action, then you should come back to the board for their action, whether the correction action plan was properly implemented, whether the findings actually existed as said so in the Manning report or not. You guys would have that ability. Right now, my understanding is somebody needs to be with the auditor to look at the scope of work and what they want to do. My suggestion was that the board not have an auditor redo everything Manning audit or report did, review did, but to take sections out of there for confirmation as to what processes were used. And that way, you then use to that. And you're certainly free to go back to call Aguilar and say, "We did a subsequent review, and this is what it's now." Because I do know that they are, the J O M office of Navajo Nation also audits your I E C committee, and those are reports that you should not only be seeking to look at as well. Ms. Jeff?
Board President and Andy. So even with the Navajo Nation's audit, can we use their audit since they've, I think they do audits every six months, or I don't know if I misunderstood them, but can we use their audit and then like what you're stating, when we get our auditor in place and to do that and conduct that audit? Because I know that Board President also wanted to go back, I think, a year. So...
That's fine. You could do that. You guys could, like I said, you've got the power pocket. If you want an audit, to go back and look at some of these things, you can in fact do so. If you want to take that J O M office's audits, you can also ask them for those copies. I'm not sure if Navajo Nation would give it to you. I don't see why they would. But if Navajo Nation gives it to you, you certainly would need to look at what are they looking at? And what are they comparing? Obviously, the J O M Navajo Nation office is not going to be able to comment on any of the policies and procedures your business office has for accounting for the funds. But they could, they could be talking about, you know, what happened to J O M funds that weren't expended? Did they roll over? Did they get processed the following year? Where did they go? Because those monies belong to the Navajo Nation. So they need to justify to the Fed.
Okay, so my question to Mr. Hyatt. How soon is the superintendent going to go ahead and conduct this audit? Because we had asked for this, I think it was about almost a month ago now. And my second question is, can he also draft a letter to the J O M program of Navajo Nation to also see if we could, you know, get a hold of their audit that they conducted so that we can also review that? And maybe we can come back at our next board meeting or even have a discussion on that?
This is Jeff. We definitely call that to your second question first. We can reach out to the board to see what, to see what reports they have or audits that they have. I think their surface level, from what I remember, their surface level audits are not as detailed as the audit that was conducted by Manning Associates. With respect to your first question, I believe that your Board President was supposed to meet with our procurement office to go over the needed information that we have bid to secure an auditor. At this point, what I understand has not been completed. That is the first step. What I understood, you approved at a meeting, we need to go over the process to follow and get, yet to get that piece.
Okay, with that, since we've already approved the correction plan, and it's already been submitted, I guess what we need to do is put in writing directives to the superintendent to get, to go back and go over the corrective action plan with the I E C, look into Navajo Nation, and then have our president sit down around the procurement office and get the ball rolling on the second audit on things that we find important and not the whole.
Mr. Mitchell, members of the board, may I make a quick suggestion? So when you go out to request services, you need to know exactly what you're looking for. So this isn't similar to when you go on a bid and you want to buy X number of folders. You're going to go out for an amount from an entity, and they need to know exactly what they're going to provide. And when they call back to us, or if we get to the level of an R F P, whatever that circumstance may be, we need to be able to state clearly what services we're looking for, because that may include pretty much travel, depending on where that audit firm exists. That may include anything from document reproduction. It just depends. So I do recommend, before we go forward, we really decide what exactly we'd like to do. That way, we can get you the information you're looking for. If it's not clear, we may end up doing it and then coming right back.
Mr. Vice President? Let's keep this complicated. We've got, again, we've got this basic matter of correction act, corrective action plan, where we can address some issues or items that were identified as possibly needing attention. Then we have this dynamic of Internet money and the Internet Parent Committee not having really reviewed this. And why that becomes sensitive, I think, is observing that process for a year. We have had numerous times where the Internet Committee has asked for information and not always gotten, often not gotten what they wanted. They've been asking. It's not that they ignore or are spurning the information. They keep asking for it in various ways. So we had an email, we received a copy of an email, I think, last Thursday from our president identifying October 25 as a 6:00 PM for an I E C work session with administration, I E C committee, Navajo Nation, J O M, and the board. It had been mentioned in the meeting, and this was a follow-up. And it seems that this, that's a chance here again to review and establish where is the committee's role in this? What goes and really needs to have their approval? What needs to go to them for information similarly, not only out of respect for them, but so they can operate, you know, in a kind of the parts that they knew make decisions about? So if, but I don't know that any of us responded. I can see any follow-up emails responding to this thing, because it was at the bottom of a long green. As far as October 25, I don't even know enough. Let's see, 7, 18, so that'd be a Tuesday, weekday tomorrow is correct. Yeah, so I don't know that that is set up with I E C or with us officially as an okay date. But there does need to be, I think, again, that continuing kind of clarification we keep running into. How do we not bypass the I E C? And then correspondingly, when we got like email today with some concerns expressed directed at the board, but saying the I E C has these concerns, but there was no motion mentioned where the I E C officially expressed that. It was stated by one person representing the committee. But there needs to be, against a procedural, things tacked down. We had that before. Members, in an email from the superintendent in his report this week that he provided these weekly reports, mentioning that there are certain things that need to come through the J O M director, not just bypassing that agenda. So we've got a number of things, I think, to sort out. I don't have, again, to this, that agenda of what the I E C members who were there went through two full days, Saturday and Sunday. And they do a lot of work, but we still have these loose ends, corrupt edges in terms of procedure and communications, and so that we don't, cost-wise, we may have that meeting on October 25th. Mr. Hanneman?
Mr. Hanneman, the issue you have to do is to understand where all these money, these monies are flowing. Money flows from the Feds, from Navajo Nation, Navajo Nation closes through us. So there's this flow of money that's coming. It has to be processed like any other fund, whether it's Title IX, Title VII, Title I, whatever federal funding you have, certain procedures you have to follow. Now, the I E C program, the regulations that govern Johnson O'Malley funds specifically puts in a role for the I E C. Now, the I E C's original position was to deal with the equity issues that exist with the Board of Education that is not majority Native American. In other words, that committee has given certain authorities under the federal regulations with regards to the expenditure of the monies, with regards to Native American education, to offset any potential equity issues with the governing board of the school district that is not majority Native American. Okay? That does not give the I E C the ability to change any of the processing requirements for those funds, whether it's J O M approval, Department of Interior approval, whether it is whatever safeguards that we have in the school district with regards to the expenditure of money, whether it has to go through the procurement code, whether it has to follow whatever our policies are. The I E C's authority is limited to the approval of expenditures after those expenditures have been made. Certainly, the I E C has to follow our procedures with regards to reimbursements, that type of funding issues. So there really is not a role for the I E C to approve the correction action plan. What they're, what they're standing, where they have a distinct interest is they need to know what it tells them they're supposed to do. So that is incumbent on the administration to let the I E C know this is what we're, this is how we're going to do things consistent with your authorities. So I don't think that there's ability here for the I E C. I think that the real issue, or the real discord, or the real disconnect here is ensuring that the I E C is aware of what the plan and why the plan is implemented, and what they need to do to move it forward. The guard, now, the secondary issue that you raised is the board's relationship to the I E C. You already have an opinion with regards to that, the board has with regards to an alternative method of your relationship with the I E C. With your I E C, you have to understand that it is there for a particular reason of federal regulation, which is not necessarily a primary issue when majority of the board is Navajo, in terms of being able to safeguard Native American interests with regards to the governing board of this school district. So you guys need to, as a board, talk about what you want that relationship to be, and how that relationship is going to move forward. Because you can still have an I E C, even though you control and you seek your J O M funds yourself. They'll just have a different role in how they interact with the board.
Okay, at this time, we did have executive session now, but it was our superintendent here at this meeting. We will, I guess, move into the next meeting as well. And I guess, so our next one will be number 10, a German. Hello? A German, anybody?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Minini to adjourn.
Ms. Jeff?
Yes.
Mr. Hittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
705.